Welcome.
Hello.
Would you identify yourself for the cameras?
Leslie Shear, Executive Director of Elder Services of Cape Cod and the Islands.
Deborah Trent Fackley, Chief Financial Officer of Elder Services of Cape Cod and the Islands.
You're welcome. We're now continuing to have budget discussion and we're happy to see you.
We're happy to be here. Believe me. Every year, we're happy to be here. We've given you a packet on the right side is information that you already have except for the updated annual report, which is in the back. And then we just put in the brochures just for a refresher for you. And then we have some charts that we know that you like to see in different on the meal program. I don't know which one you want to go over first or how you'd like to approach.
Well, I think you present what you think is, you know, what you think are the strongest points you want to get across.
Deb, do you want to talk about the financial? All right, Deb, go over.
Yeah, well, the first chart, it's pretty self-explanatory. It's just a graph of the meals delivered and the meals, the meals that were served at the dining centers. And as you see, it's been pretty steady over the years. We had a slight growth in 2009, but it's down to about 181,000 delivered in 2010. A little increase in the meals that are served at the Congregate Dining Centers in 2010.
And this reflects through October. So now we're into a new year and already in the first quarter with Meals on Wheels, we've gone up, what, 6,000 meals?
Yeah, if we were to look at where we are for the first six months of the fiscal year, this year versus last year, we're 6,000 meals higher.
In hometown, predominantly in home-delivered meals, right? Although we do have the increase in senior dining center, as in sometimes that's reflective of the economy, where people are now who may have gone out with their friends or somewhere else, and now are coming back into the senior centers and after the activity actually staying for the meal. Or where we, two of our senior dining sites are in housing units, so we've seen an increase in those two sites as well.
You know, I did the Day volunteer program last year.
Mayor for Meals, March 23rd, if you'd like to do that again.
Yes, I would.
We'll be getting information out of you second day.
Okay, because I found it just amazing, particularly the people who invited us in and really wanted to have a conversation about lots of different things. So I thought it was a pretty amazing experience.
It proves that not only, it says, "Not only but alone that we shall live."
Right, right, absolutely. Especially the Meals on Wheels folks. I mean, you know, we say it, you've heard us say it, we say it all the time, but it really is true. It's so much more than a meal. It is that safety net, it is that visit, especially now with this winter that we're having. The weather's a little crazy and the summer was so hot. So it's like, you know, it's not just the snow, it's the heat too, which is probably sometimes more difficult, you know, for some of our consumers. But, sorry, Deb.
And then jump into the next chart. I have just the meals delivered and I've indicated how many meals were delivered by town.
So you can see Barnstable is our highest. Now, we're only showing you obviously Barnstable County.
Right.
We do in Anzac and Martha's Vineyard as well, but your money only goes towards our Barnstable County meals. But you can see Barnstable is the largest site, which is for obvious reasons.
Right.
But we serve meals on wheels in every town on the Cape. Even if there's not a site in that town, for example, in Truro, we don't have any physical site in Truro, but the meals come out of Eastham. You know, we don't have a senior dining program in a few sites, but I mean, a few towns, but we have Meals on Wheels sites in those towns, with the exception of Truro, because it's.
Do you do the program in Wellfleet? Because I know that that was sort of.
One day a week.
It is one day a week, right?
Yeah, we have Meals on Wheels go out five days a week and Meals on Wheels go out one day. So in certain towns, like Barnstable, we serve five days a week in our senior dining.
Right.
Wellfleet, we serve one day, Provincetown, we serve two. Certain towns have.
Okay.
We only serve.
And then do you prepare for the Meals on Wheels to go out to that area from that site?
No.
Or you use the Eastham?
The Meals, Meals on Wheels go out from Wellfleet every day, but the senior dining site is only open one day.
Right.
But our staff is physically in that building five days.
Oh, okay, so you are preparing the meals there? And that's why I was asking.
Right.
So it's in the area, you're putting these meals together to be delivered?
We have a, our caterer is from, it's City Fresh Caterer, is City Fresh Foods, that actually is called. The meals come down, there is actually an off-Cape caterer, because no one on Cape bid for, when we went out to bid this year. And City Fresh is in Dorchester, correct?
Yes.
And that's a new caterer for us.
Wow.
No, no entity on the Cape bid when we went out.
Really?
So they were all, they were all off Cape.
Do you have any sense as to why?
It usually is because there's so many meals. It's almost, it's almost 1,000 meals.
It's a capacity issue?
Yeah, there's, it's a, it's a capacity issue. It's also, it's almost, the program is too big for a restaurant situation. And some of the school systems just don't want to take on that extra burden of doing the meals and the costs, even though the meals are paid for, obviously, to the caterer. And there is a benefit for people who want to be our caterers. But, you know, for years ago, and Bill, you probably remember this more than anyone, we had Barnstable School System.
Yeah.
And that was our caterer for years and years and years.
And then Barnstable School System also participated in our summer lunch program.
Right.
And I think they're still capable, well, I think they're still capable of doing that piece.
Right.
Because it's a smaller program.
Right.
You know, less impact on them. But I think that this is a good vehicle to tell people that that's an opportunity that might be available for, you know, for a caterer that's especially looking for off-season, you know, support, but.
And this was our year that we went out to bid and the bid process started in, starts really in June, right? Yeah, the bid goes out and it goes all the way through the summer and the contract is awarded in October. So it's a three-year contract with an additional two-year rollover. So our food is being prepared at City Fresh Foods and every day, or in the night, actually, all the food comes down into all of our sites and then our staff go in in the morning around 8:30.
Do you dictate like the procedure? I mean, I'm only thinking, what if, what if you contracted like three caterers on the Cape where they took care of a regional, like, you know, somewhere in the upper Cape, they did Falmouth Mashpee Sandwich Born, and then you had, you know, a caterer in the Barnstable region? I mean, is that within your ability to look at things like that? And would there?
It's, the preference is to have one caterer for one region. And a lot of it has to do with costs. It's, you know, it's extremely expensive to run the program. And so when you have separate caterers and separate meal costs and, you know, it's just the preference and the preference by the state is to have one caterer for one.
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine that the state does sort of dictate that, but it would be, to me, it must be another added cost of traveling from Dorchester down here every day.
Right, it's built into the, into the cost.
Into the cost.
Yeah, into there, yeah, yeah.
Just looking at, you know, trying to get it here on the Cape and make it more manageable for some caterers. They might not be able to do 1,000 a day, but they could do 250 or 300 a day or 500 a day.
We find the volume, because when we do go out to bid, they give us a bid based on the number of meals per day, 250, 500, 1,000. And so the volume brings the price down.
Down, especially for a large operation.
For example, in the Antucket, the Antucket Cottage Hospital, who is unfortunately no longer doing meals or no longer doing the home health services or lifeline services, any of that type of community, so they just pulled out of all of those programs. We just secured a caterer on, on January 3rd to take over for the hospital. And it is a restaurant and they do 60 meals a day and the cost is 850 a meal.
Wow.
Which is very high.
That is very high.
And City Fresh is.
281.
Is 281.
Wow.
That's the, for the raw food cost, it's not the overall cost of the meal. But, so, as Deb said, if there's a small, you know, if Barnstable Tavern across the street decided, oh, we could do this for three towns.
Right.
The meal cost probably, they would have to have the meal cost a very high thing.
Right.
So, you know, but we look into any, you know, I mean, you look into any, any type of caterer, any type of situation, we didn't want to go off Cape.
No, I am, just kidding, you don't.
But Barnstable did. And then we finally did and then we switched caterers this year to City Fresh.
Well, it's a good opportunity for people who may be thinking, you know, in their future, if we wanted to go out for that bid, you know, they have now three years to anticipate what that would involve and look into it, so I mean.
And we do have people, like, we have had restaurants call us, we have had, you know, different entities call. And a lot of people want to do it in the off-season, but not in the season, like a restaurant, because it's very difficult.
Oh, it's very difficult.
Yeah, so our office, our nutrition program director, Linda Zavides, speaks any time of the year to anybody who may be interested. It's just, there's a particular time where it's a formal.
Right.
You know, for a year, I had an extra duty as being a consolidated mess officer, 717 meals a day, seven days a week. And one of the things that, you know, that comes out of that is the logistics that are involved and especially when you have, you might have a, you know, like a satellite operation where you have to have, you know, everything that was present in the, you know, and where the meals were created almost had to be present, you know, where you delivered them.
Absolutely.
So there's, you know, there's an enormous amount involved in it. In those cases, you're just sort of dropping it off and serving it, you know, to people that came to where, you know, where that site was. So I sort of get that part of it.
We have to have backup at all the sites if something doesn't come down or, yeah, there's, it's a big production. I think sometimes people just think it's sort of easy to do the meal and it's just like your home and you pop something in and you do it. But like you said, it's, there's just.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, and I know you do too. A lot of restaurants, you know, that you said, yeah.
What my point is, is that as we have folks coming back from the military, you know, who sort of understand what, you know, what, let's say.
What's involved in it.
What's involved in it, you know, that might be, you know, might be an opportunity for some of our returning veterans who have, you know, have had a food service responsibility while in the service, you know, let's say to participate in originating something here that, you know, that might, you know, that might be a livable income opportunity.
Absolutely.
So anyway.
You just never know, you just, yeah, you never know who's going to be out there, you know, and looking into this, but.
Let's hope that somebody does, you know, recognize the opportunity and steps up.
And steps up the next time.
Maybe it may be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it's 281 a meal now?
For the.
At that, yeah, at that volume, as long as we maintain that volume.
Since they're covering their overhead for coming down here, maybe it's an opportunity for somebody locally to, you know, to get started.
Right, yeah. And then, and then our costs, I mean, what, what costs the agency is more than 281.
We don't want to talk about that.
Yeah. And that's the other part of it.
Yeah, you know, the fact that you've been very fortunate, I hope that continues to work. People have stepped up and been willing to deliver the meals on their own hook, you know, and just, you know, maybe get some help with gas once in a while.
Right.
And how many generous people there are.
Absolutely.
That, you know, that are willing to not, you know, to take the meals, get it to somebody and have the, and have the patience and the spirit, you know, to listen to somebody. Because I've heard so many stories about, that's the only human contact that many people have.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and we couldn't do, in our meal program, as you know, they're all delivered by volunteers. In some of our, some other meals, some other programs, in different areas, they have paid drivers, but we frankly can't afford to do that. And also because of our territory is so huge that we can't.
400 square miles.
Yeah, whereas in Boston, some of the, you know, they go into a housing complex that maybe has, you know, 20 floors and, and they have a big van and all the meals are there, whereas we have, what, 100 miles? But several hundred volunteers, as you said, I mean, those are folks that come out, you know, they'll be out tomorrow.
And we should say thank you to them.
Despite the, despite the weather, you know, I mean, they're, they're a hearty, a hearty group of people.
Yeah, and we should make sure that they realize how grateful we are to them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, for the community.
We, we can't tell them enough and anybody that knows someone who delivers meals to thank them as well, because they're out there. And, and they encounter situations that sometimes is more than just dropping off a meal, as, as you just alluded to.
You know, the, there's such a natural tie-in with all the other issues in regard to, you know, to elders. I know that, you know, there's a Tim Lind Weaver who's, who's involved with one of our suicide prevention programs, head run with some county support, a screening process for.
Right, we're actually involved with that as well.
With the elders, you know, suffering depression. And the only way you discover that is by contact. You know, I know that the, you know, the VA, when you go in there, it says, you know, have you been depressed?
Right, people are going to say yes.
Okay, but the point is that if you have somebody that's visiting on a regular basis, they can see any decompensation or deterioration in behavior and are in a position to sort of both suggest and put somebody in touch with somebody that could be helpful.
Absolutely.
So this is.
That's why the volunteers are really important. There's a whole protocol that they follow if they see something different with a consumer that they're delivering meals to. Even if you, even if you only deliver once a week or once a month, it's a regular, you know, you're used to seeing that person, you know, but we have some volunteers that deliver every day, you know.
Wonderful thing.
Yeah, it is, it is a wonderful thing. So you just see this, we broke that down and then the next chart is on how many, on some residents and how many people were serving. You know, Meals on Wheels, we have some people who have been on Meals on Wheels for several years and we have some people who may be just recovering from some sort of surgery and are on for six weeks and off and frequently become a volunteer.
Right, and are those the unduplicated, are those reflected in the unduplicated services?
Yes, yeah. We have several hundred meal clients in it, obviously, but, and do you have enough, I think that's, and then the last chart that we have, because we know that you're, this is our budget and we know that you're usually interested in seeing what towns give us some support and, and some other folks. You do know that we do the Thanksgiving 365, which is our major fundraiser in the fall, November for Meals on Wheels. We're looking into the possibility of doing, going into a golf tournament to do, you know, because this program is so costly to run, you have to, you know, tap in on, tap in on people. So it's going to be called Four Meals on Wheels, F-O-R-E. But if you get that.
Can I ask a question? I see, you know, the towns giving here and, you know, I just think, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but you were saying that Barnstable Town has the largest amount of people and yet I don't see them as a contributor here.
Correct.
Do they?
Not all towns contribute to the Meals on Wheels and nutrition.
They don't? So they don't contribute to the Meals on Wheels even though they are the largest client?
They also have, at the same time, they have their own dining facilities that supports, you know.
But they serve the meals at those?
No, that's our, that's our meals.
They serve those meals.
That's our meals in Barnstable. That's our, that's our meals.
At the elders, at the?
Barnstable Senior Center, correct, yes.
And they don't contribute anything?
I guess, I know Harwich is, you know, has a.
Harwich, we do the home-delivered meals and Harwich does their own senior dining site. But in Barnstable, that's, that's our staff that's there in collaboration with them. What's, it's not new this year, but in the last couple of years, since the daycare has moved over from the Centerville site into Barnstable Senior Center, we provide the meals for the Adult Daycare Center participants and the town makes a, it's a $4 donation, correct?
Two, yeah, for each meal.
For each meal.
For that program.
For that program. The suggested donation at a senior dining site or for Meals on Wheels is $2. When all of the, when they moved the Adult Daycare Center into Barnstable, that increased our meals, our daily meal count by considerable amount of money. So we negotiated with the town if they could do some sort of contribution. So that is coming for the Adult Daycare Center participants, is $4 a meal. But there's not, like the Town of Brewster, you see that gives 7,500. So that, that's through the Human Services Commissions in the towns.
And is it up to them to decide what they can donate to the program? I mean, it sounds as though you, there's a, there's a client fee?
There's no fee. It's illegal to charge for.
For, okay.
It's against federal regulation. So all meal programs, including ours, have a suggested donation. Our suggested donation is $2. Some people do that, some people don't.
So that's where the client fees comes in.
That's the client fees.
Okay, so.
So for, it's called fees, but it's a voluntary donation, contribution, right? And we do, we don't have it with you, but we do have a breakdown of what every town, the participants, you know, the amount of money that we receive through that, you know. But it's, it's under, our average donation is about 86 cents.
So the, the money that the towns contribute, does that come through the town's Human Services or does it come through, or does it come through directly to you?
The town Human Services.
Through, okay.
We apply.
The town meeting, I think, in Harwich, there's a, there's a, like an omnibus act called the Jim Noonan.
Right, right, for Jim, yeah.
Yeah, God bless him.
Yeah.
And that incorporates all of these, you know, all of the items that the Human Service, you know, would support for the year. I think that the other towns have something to come up with that.
And Harwich, actually, we don't receive money from Harwich.
I know that.
Yeah, but we have, but we're in the, in the community center, you know. So some, so in some towns, we, in all, in all towns where we are in a senior center or a community center, sometimes there's just a nominal cost for us to be in there. You know, like Harwich is, we pay a small amount towards electricity. And so there's in-kind donations as well.
Because I, I did talk to Harwich, you know.
Oh, yeah.
About, you know, about participation and they did tell me about the, you know, that they were doing something.
Right, right. So we're not usually charged a high rent to be in.
Are you still at the Admiralty Apartments in Falmouth?
Yes, we are. And we do senior dining and Meals on Wheels there.
Right.
We had to move our Meals on Wheels, I mean, our senior dining over there on a temporary basis when Falmouth, the senior center had a problem with their building and it's worked out that that's the best place to stay in the housing. And we're in the sandwich housing as well, as well.
So, so in the town of Barnstable, you've delivered 40,000, and that's total for the year?
Yes.
40,000.
October 1st to September 38th.
Okay.
So this is what these numbers reflect.
So you're, I'm at this 26,000 and yet they give you the most money they've ever taken.
So you follow the, the federal.
20,000.
Yes, yes, yeah. The agency is on the state fiscal year, but.
Right.
The money.
Yeah, this is on the federal year.
And this is indeed a, primarily a federal program, isn't it?
Correct, yes.
So you're a conduit, you know, you're a conduit for, you know, the federal interest in supporting this program and you're, and the county supplements that by the contribution that we made.
Right, if this is Title III of the Old Americans Act.
Yes.
Title III C. And it comes through the executive office, Elder Affairs.
Right.
And then, you know, that works.
I do. I do know how that one works. And so how are your revenues looking this year? I mean, how are you, have you been cut by the governor?
Is the governor's speech over yet? I think he's on the air now, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
He told us in NACO that he was cutting local aid and cutting other things and there was a lot of cut, 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 cut.
Yes, yes.
But I will say in fairness, he's, he's always been a strong proponent for Human Services.
Yes, yes, for the, for the safety nets and.
Unfortunately, we did sustain a considerable cuts. We have had to eliminate some positions. Thus far, we have avoided directly laying off someone because we had two vacancies open and I was able to move those two people into those vacancies. We've reduced several full-time positions to part-time positions. Yeah, we're not unique in that. I mean, the cuts were pretty severe from the state. We understand from our sources, 2012, it's going to be worse than 2011. So we'll just wait to see how that plays out. One of the positions we had to eliminate was in Protective Services. We received a dramatic cut in Protective Services, home care and nutrition.
Right.
Yeah.
It's all very too bad.
Right, so I don't know if, Deb, if you want to say anything more on that, if you want to be more specific, if you want to know any more specifics in terms of how much we were trapped.
Well, the only thing I would like to mention is the federal money that we received has been pretty flat for the last five years. We did receive in 2010, as you see, some stimulus money, the ERA funds, and that was just a one-shot deal.
Very helpful.
That was helpful, but.
To real life.
Yeah, absolutely.
But then it was, it's gone in 2011. So you see that increase in 2010 and then it's, it's lower in 2011.
And that stimulus money was used for, we didn't add any, any new sites or, we didn't add any staff. It was to pay for, because we, as you know, we run a deficit program in nutrition. And so that was very helpful there, but, so.
Well, there's a lot of people that had taken advantage of ERA and don't know what they're going to do this year, because it was clear there was a one-shot thing.
Right, and you knew that.
That was clear then, yeah.
Yeah, and we.
But the same kind, we all live on our optimism, don't we?
Right, absolutely. It's like, okay, here's that. We received ERA money for our Mature Workers Program as well. And now we have a waitlist in that program of several people. It's double digits, 43 or something.
Well, fortunately, because of the outcome last November, I'm not on that program.
Right. That's right.
Could you talk a little bit about your recovery from home care line item? What, what is that?
Our home care program has clients that receive meals. And so the home care program reimburses the nutrition program. It's basically a transfer of funds. So they reimburse the nutrition program for each meal that the home care client receives.
That's state money.
That's state money.
And you, you're looking for a considerable increase?
We're increasing the reimbursement rate, well, for two factors. It hasn't been increased in three years. And the second is because with the new meal contract with City Fresh, it is a higher, higher rate, so we need to capture a little bit more money from the home care contract.
Right, right. And that's something Elder Affairs has to approve. They have to approve it and they allow you to do it. But, yeah, with the new caterer, our cost has gone up from our previous caterer, which was Bateman. But we think for the better on this. So we're obviously here before you to, to ask for continuation on the funding that we've received and realizing that you are in a serious situation also with your budgets. But we would appreciate consideration for continuation on that.
Well, we will definitely give it due consideration.
Thank you.
You know, this is, we do just hear everything and then, as Pat was explaining to us.
This is the listening session.
This is our listening and then we deliberate, yeah, then we, then we put it all on the table.
I guess the bottom line is that we absolutely will do what we can.
Yes, absolutely.
We've always been very supportive of us and, and we appreciate that. And we, we do use your county support to, when we're seeking other funds to say, you know, Barnstable County.
Right.
You know, we try to, you know, for like the towns. You know, we try to, you know, for like the towns, you know, for the towns.
Yes, yeah, I would, I would point that out to the towns.
But, but there is a lot of, but in-kind donations is also very helpful too. You know, because for those places that we're not, if we're not in a senior center, although housing does not charge us. But if we were to have to, for instance, in Orleans, we're in a church. And that's very nice, they don't, we don't have to pay to be in there. We're in the church in Orleans.
The Methodist?
Yeah, to deliver Meals on Wheels.
Right.
Yeah.
Is it John of Arc or...
No, the Methodist Church. Methodist Church, yeah.
Yeah, we ought to thank those people for doing that.
Oh, yeah, we do. Believe me, we're very good at thanking. Because the, the reality is the meals, I mean, if we didn't have any place to go and we didn't have any people to deliver, they wouldn't go.
It certainly amount of corporate works of mercy to feed on here.
Absolutely. Yeah, we know that, especially this, these things. We've, we've had younger people call us and ask if...
I bet.
If they could have Meals on Wheels, which is always difficult because...
Unfortunately, you know, just last night at our housing authority meeting, we, we have a buy-down program that we've been, you know, that we're promoting. And one of the, one of the people that was all set to go was laid off. And unfortunately, he was laid off from back office. So that's really scary. Because back office is, you know, is an up-and-coming, you know, organization. So I don't know, you know, I don't, I don't know what that means. Because the first question, was he fired? You know, no, he was laid off. So which means that they're, that they're closing in. And that was one of the big hopeful things that's going on in my town, you know, in Harwich.
In Harwich, right, yeah. Difficult times, definitely.
It is. But you know, I...
We're all in this together.
Yeah, we are all in this together.
We have to remember.
President Obama said, we have, you know, we, we have to be optimistic. We have to work together in order to make things happen.
I think if you're working in human services or county government, if you're not optimistic.
No.
You need to be, because, because you, you have to do that. Even in our worst and trying to figure out things, you, you always try to work and say like, I don't want to lay, I mean, that's the, the thing that I don't want to do. And we're here and you try to do everything. Sometimes you have to do that.
Right.
But, yeah, you have to be optimistic because it's, you're dealing with so many people who...
We can't give up hope.
You know, I, I wasn't in the depression, but, you know, I, I have hung around many, many people who have. Being a geriatric social worker, I've heard those stories. Plus, you know, the numerous stories from my parents and their cohorts and all of that. And it seemed to me, even though those were very dire times for people, they were together. They had a sense of togetherness. And then they did look to their government for help and their government responded. And I don't get that sense today. I get the sense that everybody is very angry and they don't trust the government. Whereas, you know, they actually accept, if not encourage, you know, catering to the business. And I'm not just saying small business, I'm saying corporate business as opposed to themselves. And that's a very strange thing. When I was younger, that was different.
That was different.
They were the man.
Yeah, yeah, it was different. You know, that's why you have to have those cooperations to go after corporations.
You know, where you had to keep them in check. And I'm not sure what's going on with people's understanding today. They're looking at as though they deserve that and that's not quite the picture. So they're just accepting that as a, as a true, truism and it's not...
It's a hard time, you know, and then, and we, and we all know what's going to happen with the federal budget, so...
Yes.
That affects our...
Well, hopefully they'll all work together there too, now that they've all taken...
That's what we heard last night and hopefully that will...
Yeah, well, that was, that was the message.
That's going to happen too, you know.
That was the message, was working together, so, above all...
If we don't, we're nowhere, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's not a good place to be, absolutely.
Anyway.
Thank you so much. And we, we will give you the date. We just haven't sent out the formal for mayors.
Send those off to us.
Mayors on meals, mayors for meals, county commissioners for meals.
Right, yeah.
We have to call it mayors for meals because it's part of the national...
Pat showed us up last year, so we'll all be out there this year.
We, as an aside to that, you know, it's a, it's a nationwide project. And we, the Cape and Islands nationally, we had many people participating in that. And we received an award for that. We were in the gold standard.
Oh, that's great.
Which was exciting because I may have done it.
People are giving awards year after year because, was it, Children, Youth and Family is now, in America's Promise, we're now getting a fourth one of that.
Right.